I'd like to call the regular Board of Education meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, Mr. Antoine?
Mr. Antoine is here. Ms. Bonnick?
Here.
Ms. Barrows?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Dr. Demas?
Here.
Ms. Riley?
Here.
And Mr. Young is absent.
If we can rise for the flesh. The regions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible. And I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Moved by Mr. Connor.
Support.
Support by Mr. Demas. Any questions or changes or anything from the board?
Just that I don't think it needs to be. Facilities Subcommittee Report, I don't think.
Right.
Since we've already done that.
All right, all in favor? I opposed. Motion carries. I will turn it over to Dr. Robinson for celebrations.
Are you going to do the safety and security?
You can denote that Mr. Young is here.
Yeah. All right, several celebrations tonight and a couple of them in person.
Woo-hoo.
So it's been a while since we've actually done some in-person celebrating. So excited to share some of our successes. So let's, well, maybe not.
You know, I missed that damn meeting. I don't know why.
Mr. Nelson?
I guess I forgot.
Hey, there we go. It's always good when the tech director's here. First, we'd like to, I'm sure that board members, you've heard, I know there's been some texting amongst the board and that, but really excited about our biting Bulldogs this season and first. So we can't celebrate them enough because they're earning extra achievements prior to us getting back together to talk about them. But first of all, just recognizing, they won their way to the final at the Rochester District Event a few weeks back at Stony Creek High School and won the prestigious Judges Award there, which is the first time the Biting Bulldogs have won that award in all their years of existence. And then they followed that up two weeks later by actually winning the Pittsburgh Regional, which automatically qualifies them for the first world championship competition in Houston, Texas, a few weeks from now in April. So we're working on figuring out how to get 30 to 35 robotics students and coaches and equipment and all of that to Houston, Texas. But congratulations to our Biting Bulldogs and Coach Savage. And just thank you to all of our mentors and the people who helped make that happen. That's quite an operation and those events are quite an undertaking. But we're pleased for their success and happy for the positive press that it's giving our community. Next, we're recognizing our Romeo High School band. So on March 11th and 12th, all three of our high school bands performed at the MSBOA District 16 Band Festival at Dakota High School. So in this district festival, each of our bands performed three numbers and they're, you know, judged by a panel of three judges. And all three of our bands earned First Division or Superior Ratings. That's the highest rating. Our Symphony and Concert Bands were Straight Ones from all three judges and the Cadet Band earned an overall one for their performance. So congratulations to our bands on their performance at the district MSBOA Festival. So next, prior to the pandemic, made it a practice that to just try and get any of our All-State athletes recognized at a board meeting so the board would have the opportunity to recognize them in person. So we had quite a season this year with our Bulldog Wrestling Team. And I have five student athletes here this evening looking dapper and to be recognized. So folks, if you want to come over by the podium here and then we'll call you up one at a time. Mrs. Bonnick, if you want to help me with the certificate presentation. After you get your certificate, if you want to come down in front of the board table, the board would recognize you individually and then we'll line up over on that end of the table over there for a picture. So first, James, are you a senior this year? Junior. So James River finished sixth place this year at the state finals. Congratulations, James. The roll of handshakes, James.
Congratulations.
And then if you just wait at the end, James, we'll get a picture. Next, Brayden Merjavati finished second place.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Excellent, excellent job.
This year, the MHSAA held their first official Girl State Final Wrestling Tournament, and we had two finalists. First, Amma Manuel finished second place.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And our lone state champion this year, Michelle Rebisch.
Congratulations.
And last but not least, Senior Caleb Youngburg finished second this year. Just want to highlight Caleb is the first four-time All-State Wrestler in Romeo High School history. So congratulations, Caleb. I'd also like to take a minute to just recognize Coach Jim Callie. I was at a meet earlier this year. He's going to hate that I'm doing this, but don't leave yet, Coach. I was at a meet, I think it was the district meet, and they paused and recognized Jim for 30 years of service coaching wrestling here in Romeo. So actually knew Jim way back in the day before he came to Romeo. So that means I'm old and that probably means you are too, Jim, unless you were like 10. But anyways, just a lot of time and effort and influenced hundreds, hundreds of student athletes. So congratulations, Jim, and thanks for your continued service. So from the wrestling mats to the classroom, we are super excited to take a few minutes tonight and recognize this year's Romeo Community Schools Teachers of the Year, who are also being recognized as Macomb County Teacher of the Year finalists. So we'll introduce them one at a time, and we have a certificate and some flowers for you, and you get the handshakes.
So first, we have Tammy Maloney from Hamilton Parsons Elementary. And Tammy, just like our wrestlers, if you'd wait at the end for a picture at the end, we'd appreciate it. Next up is our middle school Teacher of the Year. Representing Romeo Middle School is Tiffany Haikola. And last but not least, we have Jennifer Cubitt from Ninth Grade Academy.
So I don't remember the exact date, but I know the intermediate school district has got the banquet planned this year. So another step back to normalcy that will get an actual in-person Teacher of the Year banquet. So congratulations again, ladies. We appreciate all your hard work. And that concludes our celebrations for tonight.
All right, can I have a motion for consent action?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Young, supported by Mr. Connor. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? I opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to informational updates and new business, were you going to cover these three? First, Dr. Robinson, or do you need me to do that?
You can do that.
Oh, okay. So under the MASB Award, we have amongst us Wayne Connor, who is receiving the Master Platinum Award and the Advocacy Skills Specialty Award from MASB. So congratulations, Wayne. I think we all received the information in our board packet about the MISD budget. I was trying to look for that date really fast.
April 21st.
April 21st. Do we have somebody who wants to go? Kim, do you normally do that as treasurer?
I have not.
You have not? Do you want to do it?
I'm not sure if I would be able to make it. I could check.
Okay. So if not, let me look at my calendar.
I can go April 21st if you want.
You can go if not.
If someone else wants to go, that's fine, but if not, I'll go.
Okay. I was just quickly looking to.
So we'll have a representative for the review and then at our April meeting, we'll be asked to, you know, entertain a resolution and then we'll need a representative to go back and actually cast the vote. I'm not sure what day that is. It doesn't look like that's noted in the communication.
Right, and usually when you, I've done the part after the board and they give you a long time period, you can stop in and do that. So it's not like a set time.
Yeah.
And then also, we all received the MCSBA Anniversary Invitation. That's on the 28th. That also happens to be the 75th anniversary, and they are having a guest speaker that, if you are tuned into social media, you've probably seen him on there. I don't know his last name, but I know his first name is Jerry.
Brooks.
Brooks. So probably just need to let Antoinette know who is planning to attend. I think we had until April 14th, if I'm remembering correctly, for the RSVP.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. So if you can go, go ahead and let Antoinette know. Next, we have our Subcommittee Meetings. So we did have a facilities meeting as we talked about the last time. That was where we went over everything before the bond issue. And then since that time, on March 7th, we did have a Finance Committee Meeting. Everyone received those minutes. I can just kind of go over it quickly. You know, we had the IRS audit that Ms. Lasky's already talked to us about. We discussed at length the appraisal of our properties, specifically 297 Prospect. I just want the board to know that we'll move forward with getting the background information on 297 Prospect, and then I have reached out to legal counsel so that they can come in and guide us and we can have a closed session on the property at that time. So Dana Abrams will give us more information and can do an attorney-client privilege with us.
Just real quick, what other background information are you getting from whom?
That great Northern Consulting Group member of the service that was in your packet as well.
I do, but it was recommended that by the committee that we meet as a board to discuss that.
No, the committee said they wanted more information before we meet as a board. So we're going to have this done so we have information on the property, then we meet as a board to discuss it. Because it'd be nothing to discuss yet if we don't even know what the property can be, should be, how much expense it would be for us just to keep it, sell it.
Right, but I mean, there's cost associated with that, plus if we wanted them to do all the services that were outlined in that proposal, because.
No, we don't want it. The committee specifically said just that first scope, nothing beyond that.
The Finance Committee didn't say that.
Well, two of us did. Wayne and I said go ahead with the first part.
I don't believe so. I believe Mr. Connor and I suggested that it go before the whole board to decide where the whole board felt about that and then.
This is a service though, Kim, so we don't need to vote on a service. So would you like to make a motion to vote on the scope of work? Is that what you're trying, that would make you?
Well, I guess I'm wanting the input from all the board members as to, one, where they stand on the property.
Well, how can we take a stand on a property that we haven't gotten the information as to what it can be?
Well.
I don't feel comfortable speaking about it until I have the data first.
Thank you, Chris.
I mean, I think everyone needs to review the proposal and just determine on what portions of that proposal by this company we want them to do, because there's a lot in there that, one, as a seller, we're not responsible for, and, two, are they going to not only collect the fees but also commission if they sell the property?
We haven't even decided to sell the property.
Well, that's my, that's my point. Why are we paying potentially twice? Because if you pay this company, then ultimately, if you do decide to sell the property, then whoever sells the property for the district, they get a commission, which a lot of the responsibilities of a Realtor or Realtor-broker is listed in this proposal.
So are you suggesting we get a Realtor to sell the property when we haven't decided to sell the property?
I'm just suggesting that the board discuss this proposed proposal from this company and determine what we want them to do first, because there's different areas. You know, there's Phase One, there's Phase Two, Three, Four, you know, compensation and what's hourly and.
But this was discussed at the finance meeting?
It was for the pre-sale investigation, just the pre-sale.
It was discussed at the Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee determined the majority that they did not feel comfortable in recommending this to the board.
Why didn't you say that the minutes misrepresented the conversation?
It says here that Dr. Robinson was going to determine the format for the discussion. So is this the discussion or are we going in closed session to discuss it?
We can't go into closed session.
So then I guess we're having it now.
I would like to go forward with the outlined service that was provided to me by the Finance Committee in the minutes.
Support.
Support. Chris supported that.
Okay.
I said I would just like to go forward with it.
Yeah, that's all they're doing is appraising to, remember during our session, we talked about if we just had an open-ended question before we even know like what it's zoned, what can be there, what couldn't be there, that we wanted to get that information first and then meet with legal counsel about the outcome of that.
Well, what it comes.
There is no decision-making, nothing.
And Wayne, did you, I mean, you were at Finance?
Yeah.
And you agreed with this?
We didn't basically want to spend any money on the property or anything. We kind of got to get, find out how much it's worth and.
But we have to spend money to find out what it can be done, what can be done with it, right?
That's an appraisal and that's the data. And then, once we have the data, then we can discuss as a board what further actions we want to do with the property. But how do we even know if we don't have the data or the appraisal and the cons and pros?
So I'm asking then, are you looking to approve tonight Phase One at the cost not to exceed $5,000?
First of all, we don't typically take action on service that the district can do. So Dr. Robinson has authority to do that part. We don't have to do that. But Kim, what I think you're suggesting is you wanted to make sure the full board is on board with doing the pre-appraisal. So that would be a very appropriate conversation right now. It sounds like Chris is okay with it, Jill's okay with it, I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
How much was the first phase?
Not to exceed $5,000.
I don't know. Do we have to actually spend $5,000 to find out how much our property's worth?
Correct.
Just going to have someone come out and give you a value on the property?
Also, what it can be used for, Wayne, I mean, we don't even know in terms of zoning, what it might be used for, what might it not be used for. So we have to go through some steps.
You can call the Village of Romeo and find out your zoning.
Well, Kim, I guess I, so what is your concern?
Is that, my concern is to, I don't want to approve the entire proposal, period. So what I'm saying, that's my question.
But we aren't being asked to approve it because it's a service that the district is.
Well, then I guess we don't need to discuss it, because if Dr. Robinson's going to do whatever he wants.
Well, Kim, please don't.
No, I mean, I mean, if it doesn't matter what we want.
It does. So what the direction the subcommittees landed was getting more information and having a full discussion with the board. I think we can all agree that everybody agrees the full board should have discussion on what to do with the property.
Right.
Secondly, we don't want to get so far out, this is very near and dear to the Village. This impacts a lot of residents. So I certainly don't want to be, I want an expert to tell me what can and can't and who does it. Our superintendent is our instructional leader. I don't expect him to go out and test the soil and know how much it's going to cost to do everything that could go on a building. I think that's a service that, like many services we use in the district, he has the authority to do that. It's within our budget that we've approved. I mean, he's not spending money that we haven't approved to do service items.
Well, it sounds like the question is how, how much of that so-called contract are we in for?
I left believing we were just doing the pre-investigation, just the very minimum to get the fair minimum facts.
What is that, $5,000?
Yes, but.
It's not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed $5,000.
Right.
Not to exceed $5,000.
But again, we don't typically vote on service things that are already in our budget. They have the authority, or Dr. Robinson does. Obviously, his job was to take it to subcommittees to get a feel for where we were. And at least the conversations I was part of, I think it was very clear that we wanted more information before we just said, "I'm willing to do this."
That was also the conversation, if I recall, it was back in February at the Facilities Committee, was that we wanted to look at preliminary stages of looking at that property at 297 Prospect.
That was following the committee of whole. That was the night after.
February 7th, whatever, I don't know.
Right.
Right.
It was. It was Mike, Jill, and I.
Right. It wasn't where the other members of the board were there.
No, but the exact same conversation came to the finance. It was the exact same information was presented at both, because I actually attended both.
Well, I think if we knew the appraised cost and the zoning, in other words, commercial, residential, whatever, I think that would probably be sufficient for the first stage, right?
And I think the key is that information is going to go to our legal counsel. Then our legal counsel will guide us as a board as to then how you move forward. Like, you know, you don't, do you want a Realtor? Do you not need a Realtor? Do you need this? Do you need to make sure it's zoned? Do you need to put statements on it? I mean, I don't know. I mean, until we get the information, we haven't demolished a building and sold any property as far back as I can remember, so.
So let me give you a little bit of a timeline here. Of course, this has been a topic of conversation for residents close to 297 Prospect ever since probably when we had the last walk and there on out. So Vicki reached out to legal counsel that specializes in this type of work and asked for recommendations just simply on, we just were seeking what type of companies are best to work with this. At that point in time, Dana Abrams referred Vicki back to a company that had worked with the board in the past prior to her and I being here. And this consultant is reputable, and so Vicki then moved and reached out to them for a proposal. And at that point in time, we had enough information to engage the Finance or the Facilities and Finance Committees. It was clear out of the committee meetings that we were only talking about 297 Prospect and even clearer that we were only talking about Phase One of the proposal not to exceed $5,000 so that we can understand what type of value we're even talking about. At that point in time, there would be an opinion letter of valuation that would come from Mrs. Abrams. And at that point in time, if the board desires to have an attorney-client closed session, privileged closed session, then we would and she would come. To have her come now does not have the information that you're going to want to discuss in full. So I think if we follow that timeline and we go back out, I don't anticipate this would get done by April, but I would be hopeful that by our May meeting, we might be ready to have that closed session. So that was my intent, was only to move forward with that first phase to get that valuation done.
If I remember correctly, at the Finance Committee, at the end, you stated that that was going to be your next steps.
I also want to be clear, because public will watch this, as many of you reached out to me, no decision has been made on the disposition of the property. And I've shared with many community members, the village president, we're trying to get through a pandemic. We had another bond issue on the ballot. The board had a lot of things they were working through. And that, once we felt like at the time was right to at least begin the conversation, we would probably start with some kind of valuation, and that's right exactly where we're at. Engaging the residents that live in that area in some sort of town hall, whether that be virtual or in person, to get some feedback, understanding the zoning, all of those things before we make any decision will all be part of the process. This is just simply step one.
So moving on to what else was in your packet, that committee also talked about the 2022 bond cash flow. We talked about the state budget update, the timeline of that, what that looks like for us. And obviously, we all know that we approve a budget in June. We talked about the remaining facility bond funds, what was left to finish up there. And I don't, I don't remember if we really did talk about food service transition, but obviously later on tonight, we have that as well. Yeah. But it was certainly at the next meeting that we were aware of that. So, Kim and Wayne, is there anything else you want to add from that committee meeting?
No, it was a good meeting.
Anything else?
No, no, fine.
Okay. Safety and security?
I just want to, I just think sometimes it's. I just want to, I just think sometimes it's, it's important that subcommittees do not supersede an information in the entire board. In other words, I know that certain things go to subcommittees, but depending on the item, I think maybe it would be a lot, a lot more informative if the whole board knew about it in advance that this was being pursued. Maybe that would alleviate some of the concerns.
I understand what you're saying. And I think we also have to be aware of the message that we're sending out when we continually question the actions of, of the subcommittee in the sense that that's how we get a lot of work done.
Yeah, I understand.
And if we didn't have subcommittees, we'd be meeting, you know, every week and for hours and hours. So I think, you know, whenever, it seems like lately, we've been bringing it up a lot. And, and there's a suggestion, I feel like, that, that the subcommittees are being somehow secretive or moving behind the scenes. And, and I just, my opinion is that that is not the case at all.
Right, the minutes.
That it's how we do business. The minutes go out within 48 hours after the subcommittee meeting. We all have a chance to read them and ask questions of committee members or the superintendent.
Well, the role of subcommittee is to recommend and suggest to the full board in consensus to the full table, once those topics are brought. It's never, a subcommittee makes any decisions, you need the full board's support on that. It's just kind of dissecting some of that information as a subcommittee.
Right.
And then as a board, you expand that. But the, the subcommittee really knows the information pertaining to certain issues.
But I think it all depends on what the topic is.
True.
Some topics are broad enough that, you know, the, the board should at least know that this is going to be pursued at the subcommittee level. That's, that's my point. I'm not talking about everything, but there are certain, certain big issues that I think that that would be helpful.
Well, I think we also, if we just use this as a case study, I think we have to be mindful that throughout the bond issue, we were very clear that demolition was included. We always knew that next obvious question was going to be, right? Once it returned to green space, are we maintaining it? Are we mowing it? Are we putting a park? Or what, what are we doing with it, right?
Well, sitting on that ad hoc committee with you, Dr. Demus, it was never brought up what was the plan after. So this, it's nice to finally feel that we're at least getting some data on the property and it's going to help us make our decision, whatever way we go. But it's just a matter of having information and the zoning on it.
Right.
I guess the point I was trying to make is repeatedly, the full board during the superintendent's weekly report has talked about how we had some flooding there, how, I mean, we've, we have talked about the property and he has indicated soon, we're going to have to make a decision on that. He had communicated with us in numerous reports that he gets a lot of questions and the village is curious and, and that type of thing. So to me, I don't know if, if we're just not reading the communication in the same context, but I take that to mean we're all informed of that. I don't take that to mean a decision's made. And again, using this as a case study, so it did go to facilities and facilities narrowed it down from this. We were all over the place, right? At first, it's like, oh my gosh, we have all, we have two other locations as well, but we're not talking about those. We wanted to narrow it right down and say, okay, we need more data. That came out of one subcommittee. Then the next subcommittee, whether Kim agrees with me or not, did say we needed more data. We talked about having legal counsel. We talked about a closed session. I, I mean, I, I took notes. I, I know that we had that conversation. So, you know, and at the end of the conversation, the superintendent clearly said, "This is a service. This, this is my job to get the next information." It sounds like, "Board, you want more information." So whether it costs money to get this information, I guess that is something we could argue on. But we rarely sit and stew upon a service-type contract, you know, less than $5,000. If Kim's concern was that it was the whole kit and caboodle, I mean, then just, that should have been asked of the subcommittee and/or the superintendent. I mean, we met on March 7th, so, you know.
My point was, I wanted to hear the response and the input from all the board members. And I personally, at that point in time, did not feel comfortable in recommending to the board to go forth with the proposal. I wanted the input from the entire board. That was my position. I wasn't denying it. I wasn't saying we didn't need the data. I said I wasn't comfortable in recommending it to go forward with the proposal. And I certainly don't recommend going with the entire, all the phases. Now, it's my understanding based upon the discussions tonight, everyone's in agreement, as well as I am, to at least go through with Phase One. Fine. But that was my point. I specifically said that during the meeting. And that was, that was my memory of the meeting. You disagreed with me, Anita. We went back and forth for over 10 minutes about it. And Dr. Robinson said, "Well, I can go forward with it regardless," which that is true. But my position was, I wanted the entire board to find out where everybody stood and then go forward or not go forward.
Kim is, Kim is right about what she said. She didn't even know the, she wasn't sure the property was, we knew we were going to sell, but we didn't know when.
We don't know we're going to sell it. That's not true.
No, don't say that.
What she's saying is she didn't want to do all three phases, which would have been about $30,000.
Yeah. Now, that was not my memory that we ever said that. We left the meeting with, Dr. Robinson was going to get the initial part and, and we were going to reach out to legal counsel. That's how we left that meeting. I mean, so, and that's exactly where we're at today. But I think this is a very good reminder to all board members, when, when the minutes come out from the subcommittees, which always happen before a regular board meeting, like enough time to study and ask questions, you know, if we're going to continue forward with subcommittees, then you, you need to read those and reach out to your subcommittee members and, and make sure that you feel comfortable with subcommittee information, which as Mr. Young has said, is just usually determining what needs to go to the full board. It's never making a decision without the full board.
Right. And in bold print, in the minutes of the Finance Subcommittee, because that's why I didn't question it, it states, "Committee recommendation, discussion of the Prospect Street property be brought to the full board either at a board meeting or in closed session. Dr. Robinson will determine the format for that discussion."
It doesn't say it will be brought to the board.
Yeah.
No, but, but, but I think, I think the way I'm understanding that is the discussion will be brought to the board more once we know what we're discussing.
No.
That's how I understood that.
Right. And I, and I think, I do think maybe, Kim, and, and again, that's a great question. If those minutes confused you, you should have asked because I would have easily told you. I personally know that Dana Abrams is on vacation. We're getting the preliminary information and the full board is going to discuss this with her when the data is there, which is what I brought up at the start.
I wasn't confused. I wasn't confused.
But you and I interpreted it differently because I interpreted it once we had the information we need to discuss.
Apparently. But I'm just saying, Anita's saying, well, if we have questions about the minutes, we should bring them up.
Oh, okay.
I didn't have any questions.
Well, but if that gave you.
It's not what I wanted to be done. And that was, I wanted the full board in on discussion. Dr. Robinson was going to determine how that was going to take place.
Okay, so.
I was fine with that.
So that's awesome. So that's exactly, Dr. Robinson is deciding we're doing Phase One. He's going to get that information and we're going to take it with legal counsel.
Well, that wasn't, you know, there's a difference between he, it was up to him to determine what phase. This is saying it was, it was up to him to decide how the board was going to meet about it, whether we're going to meet at an open meeting or a closed session.
Okay.
And that's fine. That's fine. We're all in agreement. We're going to go with Phase One. He can go ahead and do what, you know, if that's what he wants to do. But that was, that's why I never raised any questions about the minutes because they reflected what I said and what was decided.
But Dr. Robinson also mentioned tonight that before we do anything, he's going to be speaking with the village, the community, once we have this data. But how can we even speak about this if we don't even have any data? I do not personally feel comfortable talking about this until I see numbers and information pertaining to the property.
And Chris? I would not have known that had we not been having this discussion, how you felt about it.
Okay.
And that was my point. I needed to know how you felt and all the board members felt about going forward with this. So that's why I did not want to recommend it, the proposal, unless I heard everyone's thoughts. So.
And we're all in agreement on the first.
We're all in agreement. Okay.
Okay. So let me clarify. Thank you for that because I anticipated we might have some discussion. And we can have discussion based on committee reports. It's part of our informational portion of our meeting. And I would also remind the board that when we get to the portion of any agenda and there's board discussion for the good of the district. I know a lot of times, the board uses that opportunity to, to thank people or recognize achievements. But that also might be the opportunity to have additional discussion. And, and I just, I want to reiterate what I think I heard, and that is, is as you see minutes from committee meetings, specifically meetings that you might not serve on the committee, and you think that there needs to be some discussion at the next regular meeting, just let me know and we'll be sure to include it in the informational section of the meeting. And then hopefully we'll be, we'll be positioned. So I, I understand where the board is at and I'll work with Vicki and we'll move forward on Phase One of that proposal so we can get some valuation information on, on just 297 Prospect. And then we'll bring that back to the board with some other information before we do anything else.
Does safety and security feel the need to, yes, Gus, yes, stuff?
I'm sure you all got a copy of those very informative and comprehensive minutes. I just highlight a few of the aspects of that. That was an excellent meeting. Some of the, some of the major points that were presented were, first of all, enhanced staff training and retraining. Okay, that was very important, especially after the Oxford incident. Okay, so that was a stimulus for continued and enhanced security training. Classroom door security locks, locking system on the interior of the doors, that's a process that's in motion. And it's going to take a while to complete it, but nevertheless, it's underway. There was a behavioral threat assessment model, which is a framework for allowing the mental health professionals, administrators, and resource officers, give them guidance necessary to, to assess those people or students who might be, have, have issues. Okay? And also the relocation and reunification centers for kids to, to go to after the incident and also places for reuniting with parents. Enhanced communication systems, two-way radio systems that are somehow integrated within district-wide. And also, we're looking into with Bruce Township and hiring another resource officer. So I kind of think those were the highlights. If anybody has any questions, ask Dr. Robinson. No, that's pretty comprehensive stuff.
Seeing no questions?
It's my formal ask now. I mentioned this at our last meeting, but I want to formally ask the board to, you know, just solicit interest in forming an ad hoc committee to help guide strategic planning. I think the first phase of that work, I'd want the ad hoc committee to just work with me to entertain our possible facilitation avenues through a couple of the state associations or independent. And then, once we decide that, then I think we'd be talking a little bit more about timeline as we head into fall. Once we get into the actual process, I would certainly hope that the ad hoc members would, would be a part of the process. But if there's other members of the board that want to be involved, we would not preclude that. We just have to be super conscious of the fact that, making sure that in any of those large group meetings, if there's a quorum of the board, it's, it's not for any work of the board, your, your stakeholders at that point in time. So.
So is that for fall planning you're thinking?
Yes.
Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah.
But what you're asking for right now are members to start helping just shape it.
Yes.
The actual work would be fall.
Yeah.
The strategic planning itself, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So he's looking for a few of us to be on the front end of that. And of course, all of us can participate in the full strategic plan.
I will volunteer.
I'm happy to help as well.
Well, I have a recommendation as far as gathering information to facilitate the strategic plan. We have the first climate survey. That, that's going to be used, right?
Yes, we hope that portion of that will.
Well, I, I suggest that we also have another survey, a climate survey of this, of just the entire staff of the district. In other words, in other words, teachers, administrators, bus drivers, you know, everyone who works in it, custodians and so on and so forth, has an opportunity to, to participate in a survey to gather, simply to gather information that'll help us in the continuous improvement model of strategic planning.
In addition to the one that they just did? Because staff and, staff and everybody did the one that we just did.
And plus that one.
So you want to do another one?
Another one, yeah.
A follow-up survey, kind of?
No, this one will be totally staff. The, the other one that we did was.
No, the other one we did included bus drivers, custodians, food service.
But, but I'm looking at an internal survey, just a Romeo Community School staff survey.
So would you want different questions?
Yeah, I think we could.
More, more towards.
Yeah, we could talk to a company to help us put together whatever we're looking for. What kind of questions? What kind of information? What kind of concerns do people have? Say, you know, whether it's safety, you know, I'm not going to guess on what the topics are.
But isn't that what we just got out of that one? Did you?
Pardon me?
I feel like those things just rose to the top.
The way I read that one, that was more student learning and, and aspects of, of what the kids go through. But this is, this is a climate of within the district itself.
I, I mean, as a parent, I answered it and it were questions about safety and.
I know you did. But you were answering questions, I think, that were, or should I say, piggybacking on what the students were saying, sorry, either affirmative or agreeing or disagreeing. I'm looking at just an internal staff survey. We've done those here before. I mean.
I just don't understand how it's different.
The only purpose of that is to gather any more specific information under the continuous improvement of the district for strategic planning. That's all.
Why wouldn't we include all the stakeholders again, though? I mean, we just did one. Why wouldn't we just include all the stakeholders again if we're looking at continuous improvement? I'm really trying to understand either what's different about what you want or why we wouldn't include everyone.
I just, I, I need to, you know, we need to discuss what kinds of information we want to gather. And I, I think there would be, I think there would be a difference with doing just a staff survey is what I'm looking at.
So let me.
Depends on what the, it depends on what the questions are.
Let me, let me step back and just say, I think the first thing is simply deciding who's going to help facilitate this process for us.
Yeah.
And then, once we engage that company, they're clearly going to have some direction and.
Well, that's what I mean, yeah.
Whether there's portions of our current school climate survey that, that will help, I know they will. But if there's a different, additional questions we want to ask, then we'll discuss the forums of that once we get the facilitation process. Who's going to help us designate it? So for right now, just, just, you know, getting an ad hoc committee together. And then, as we meet with that committee, we, of course, will report back to the full board. And any of this facilitation and that would likely come to the board for approval. So first step is just get a few representatives from the board to help work with me to go through these different options we have for facilitation.
I'd be happy to help if needed.
Okay. And Anita, you said you.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we'll, I'll, I'll talk with Chris, Jill, and Anita. And then we'll have to have time to speak to representatives from MASA and MASB as to what their process is and how it works and things like that. Okay? All right. Let's move on with our informational, maybe. Here we go. So Mr. Nelson is here tonight because we have action on. So Mr. Nelson is here tonight because we have action on the agenda in regard to the 2016 bond. And this is specifically the technology project, the technology portion of the transportation facility project. So take it away, Mr. Nelson.
Okay, thank you. So in February, we had a pre-bid conference for this project where we had three contractors attend. We received two bids on the project itself. This project is to equip the new transportation facility with network, phones, PA, clocks, all those things. And so the board received the recommendation letter from IDS to move to approve Capricorn Diversified Systems for this project. The district has not used Capricorn in the past, but they come recommended by IDS, and they were the low qualified bidder. So that's our recommendation. This new facility includes a training room for drivers. So what they now have is in the portable is kind of a waiting room and a, and a lounge kind of a place. This will actually be more like a classroom where they can also wait between their runs, but also take advantage of training when that comes up with an 86-inch interactive display and the speakers and all those things that, like we have in the collaboration space where we met last week. We will be reusing equipment that we can reuse. So access points, cameras, things that can be repurposed from the existing building will be reused. And we'll have a dedicated space for our technology. Right now, we don't have that. We have some shelves, but we'll actually have an IT closet. And I think that's going to be a good thing. I mean, we'll also, I think in the future, probably put a server and some storage in there. The new buses are coming with up to five high-definition cameras and that storage, and, and all that footage can be stored locally right in, in that facility. And I'll answer any questions you have. There's also a resolution on the, on the agenda tonight. Yes?
The cameras, are they going to be high resolution like the ones on the bus?
The, yes, the, the cameras in the, in the yard and, and the facility themselves are two-megapixel high-resolution cameras. We're going to reuse the ones we have, and we're going to add a few too. There's a pole that's about 300 feet out from the facility to the east, and that's going to give us a reach with four cameras a little bit further out than we have now to give us better, better coverage of the bus yard.
So how old are the cameras that we have right now?
Those were last replaced in 2020, I believe.
Oh, okay.
They're, they're not very old, just a couple years old.
Sounds good. Good job.
Thank you.
Any other questions? This is a resolution later. All right, moving on to the superintendent's report.
So a couple things tonight. First, just checking in on the 2021 bond. The bond, sale of the bond's officially closed last week on March 24th. So the funds are now deposited and available. And then, I guess, looking a little bit more through the design phase, because we know once we approved our schedule, we're into design for that first grouping. So we began our Croswell Design Team meetings two weeks ago, and we have our next meeting this Wednesday. There's been a couple site visits of members of that team to newer facilities in the tri-county area. So we look forward to re-engaging with Dan Jerome from French and the committee, continuing to move our design conversations forward. We've also had initial meetings on the Group One Elementary additions at Hamilton, Parsons, and Indian Hills. These initial meetings were just with the principals, talking through location of the addition and some things like that. So Mr. Murray is in process, working with me and the principals. We're going to be organizing some STEM music and art classroom work teams so we can have representatives from each building, and also administrative along to, to meet with the architects and that, to just talk about what do we want in those facilities? How do we want to utilize the square footage? And those conversations will set the stage, not just for Group One, but also for Group Two, so we have uniformity across these new facilities and any that we're going to retrofit. So that's a design update. We began a process that we've been looking forward to, quite honestly, for a couple of years, ironically. So Mrs. Butler, do you want to come up to the podium, please? And we're going to hear from, from Julia, and I know Mr. Young was also a member of the, the initial wellness committee meeting. So give us a quick update on what's going on with wellness.
Okay, so this past Thursday, we had our first comprehensive wellness committee meeting. We currently have 13 members on our committee. They were very engaged. It's a very dry read when you're reading the material, but everybody was very engaged in the conversation, very excited to be there. Everybody was just ready to jump in and start working. So it was a very good meeting. Our next meeting is August, April 21st. And Chris, did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
I just wanted to say that, yes, we have to be compliant with the USDA in regards to this and establishing our policy pertaining to the wellness and food and nutrition. But there was a lot of conversation involving exciting ways to bring in different foods, different activities. We even mentioned like indoor skydiving for kids, offering more opportunities to really get active if they so choose, but expanding our options for the district, for the staff, and the students. So we are in the very early phases, but as Julia said, there's a lot of excitement pertaining to something that could have been very boring. But, you know, the first sentence, and we were already engaging in conversation, and to be working with such a great group, it's, it's, it's going to be exciting to bring updates to the full board.
Just one more thing I'd like to add, just so everybody, so where we've included members from all different levels throughout the district, plus parents and students. So we have a full team, so. And thanks for the board members that joined.
I'd like to thank Julia. She really ran the meeting well, and the communication and information was very clear. So that allowed us to really just start getting the gears moving in our heads of how to start the conversation pertaining to this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. McFarland, academic services update?
Not too many things today. Just wanted to re, remind the board and the public that when we return from spring break on April 11th, the test, state testing window opens. If, the past couple of years have been a little wonky with state testing, because in 2020, we didn't have any state testing because we were all in our homes. And then last year, it was, it was different because some schools were still all remote. So not as many districts tested as many kids as we did last year. We did a great job last spring. So grades three through eight, take the M-step. Grades eight, nine, and 10, take the PSAT. The eighth grade takes science and social studies M-step. Grade 11 has the SAT work keys and then the social studies and maybe science M-step. They get, they get, they get the trifecta for. I want to remind the public, the State Superintendent, Dr. Rice, put out a memo reminding parents and everyone in the school community that there is no apt-out in testing for state testing, and the federal and state accountability rules will be in full force for this testing period. So our goal is always to test 100% of students, but the, the bar is 95%. Anything less than some of our accountability index and accountability grades drop. So just encouraging all the, all the families and students to, to do their very best. We've prepared them as well as we can and get a good, eat a good breakfast the day that you're testing. And the building principals will be sending out the schedule to the families. The window opens on April 11th and it closes May 20th. Professional development. So update on our March 2nd professional development. We had lots of things going on in different buildings that were supposed to happen February 2nd. But we had the, the weather forecast that we were going to get snowmaged in. So February 2nd was canceled for a day of school. So March 2nd, we just took what we were going to do then and did it on March 2nd. We did have an opportunity to get some K-12 teams together that afternoon. Really good conversation, and everyone wants to have more of that. So we are talking about May 4th. We believe that we are, we are aligned with what we need to be for our instructional days and hours of, of instruction to be able to make up our February day on May 4th. And it really will give the buildings an opportunity to dig into the school climate survey. I think we, we got some initial information that the, right the day before, I think like March 1st, or if not that February 28th day. So we really didn't have enough time to work with our staff on that March PD day around the school climate survey. So I know the administrators are looking forward to doing that on May 4th, as well as some continued vertical alignment within our levels. I know middle school wants to talk to the high school teams because of, you know, eighth grade move-ups and, and things like that. So we will solidify the agenda for that in our April ALT meeting, but I believe it'll be a day well spent with our, our teachers talking about this year and, and getting some foothold on how, how we might prepare for next school year. And then I just wanted to update you. The past couple of weeks have been really interesting with Oakland University. We typically pair with them for student teaching opportunities in Romeo, and we have since I've been here and I'm sure before. And we typically have anywhere between five and eight, you know, elementary student teachers. Secondary are getting harder to find. So we, we typically may only have one or two. But this year, Oakland approached us, particularly with the elementary right now. The grade bands of teacher certification have changed in the state of Michigan, so Oakland University is aligning differently. And they're wanting to create some partnership districts at the elementary level for particularly, I guess we'll call them hubs, for math, science, and social studies together. So unfortunately, I was not able to meet the, make the virtual meeting, but Dr. Robinson and Mr. Murray with Mr. Essien and Mrs. Wycheck, they were able to hear about the exciting opportunity that we have to continue to expand our student teaching and pre-service teaching within our elementary buildings. So right now, we have nine placed out of OU, and I have an email with five more at the elementary. So we have a little bit of work to do to take those other five. And, and then we'll have another group in the fall of juniors from OU. So we could be up well into 20 pre-service or, or student teachers just from Oakland University. That's quite a bit within five elementaries. And you've got to remember, we hired some really great candidates, and they're first and second-year teachers from Oakland University. So we know that they have a great program. So recruitment is one of our goals, Dr. Robinson. So it's in our classrooms. So we have a little bit of work to do with that for the elementary. The other exciting opportunity that, that was brought to my attention, one of our parents is a teacher in Rochester, and she knows what great things we're doing with our academies at the high schools. So she reached out, and she serves as a liaison for Oakland University's secondary education placements in Rochester schools. So she works with OU and works with the mentor teachers and student teachers from OU within the three high schools in Rochester. And so she reached out to their coordinator and said, you've got to check out Romeo. So I'm in the middle of communicating back and forth to try to get something like that at our secondary level, because Mr. March, if he has any nails left, just keeps telling me in three to four years, I need a bunch of teachers at the middle school. So that's another opportunity we can have right in our backyard to grow our own, so to say, once they're at OU. But the other exciting piece is I'm meeting with the elementary coordinator from Oakland. So she understands what our, our education pathway is, what kind of coursework we have, and the opportunities they have to try to form a partnership for our high school kids to possibly gain some credits. I think they call those articulation agreements, that if they do things with us when they're in high school, it's aligned to what they're looking for at the university. They could get some college credit through that. So lots, lots of exciting things. It's going to come together pretty quickly in order to have some of those student teachers placed from Oakland before they leave, and so they know where they, where they'll be in the fall and, and August. So those are just some, some updates from our department.
All right, thank you.
I have a few questions.
Sure.
Are you excluding then student teachers from other colleges? Are you just accepting Oakland University students?
Right now, at our elementary, we're only going to continue to accept Oakland University student teachers because of the number that we have and the requests that we know will be coming for junior and seniors in college, because we only have so many veteran teachers that can serve as mentor teachers.
So you could potentially be missing out on a more qualified student teacher by just accepting Oakland University students?
I don't, I.
It's just a student teacher.
It's a student teacher. It's not a candidate that we're offering a position to.
I know, but if there's members of our community, young members that.
There's been quite a few teachers that we have hired throughout the years that have been Romeo alumni, went through Oakland, and we have hired them.
Right. And that's great. But I'm just saying, if there's other students that are attending other colleges that are from our community and want to teach in our community.
And we've hired some from Wayne as well.
Right. But if, I'm just asking if you're, if, say, a student from another college would love to do student teaching, and you're saying, well, no, I'm sorry.
Correct. Right now, our elementary, we do not have space for them.
And I, I think maybe we reframe it. I don't think there's a conscious, oh, Western Michigan, U of M, we're not doing it. I, I believe what Mrs. McFarland is saying, at least for this year and next fall, we've already taken in our quota. And it happens to be from Oakland.
Okay.
Just from student teaching.
Well, and, and that's true. And then, but.
But that's not to say that next winter, we get five from U of M, and we don't have anybody from Oakland, or whatever school you want to say.
We'll have to see this new partnership and, and this idea of two years with us, and they want them to be paired together. And so, you know, definitely, I would say the entire next school year, we're, we're, we don't have any space at our elementary. That doesn't mean in the future years. We don't know what OU will bring to us, but we need to understand what this partnership means. And, and we already have nine placed, and we have five waiting. And I know we have juniors that will be coming to us once we say we'll be a partnership.
Really what Oakland is doing is trying to secure solid.
Correct.
Student teachers.
With mentors.
Student teaching positions for their, I mean, they're coming at it from that, and they look to Romeo as a, a great place to land them to get quality.
And we want to make sure that any student teacher is placed with a mentor teacher who is prepared to mentor a student teacher.
And that, and that's great. I'm just, you know, I don't want, I guess if there's other students from attending other colleges, and even potentially maybe have higher expectations or aspirations or whatever, I, I wouldn't want them to feel discouraged that we don't want them done as a teacher in our district.
I, I wouldn't discourage anyone to be a teacher in our district.
But I'm just saying, so if someone from another college, attending another college comes to you, and you're saying, no, I'm sorry, we're full, do you do, then do you take that opportunity to say, to help them potentially student teach in surrounding areas and encourage them that once they're ready to come back to our district and, and apply for a teaching position?
I can't, I can't help place them in student teaching in other districts.
They have, they, everybody has, schools have somebody who does that work?
Right. But she would know who that person is. No? You don't know, like, who does, who's in charge at Utica and who's in charge at?
No, usually the, the university coordinator.
Right, that's what I meant.
Reaches out to school districts.
Right.
Okay.
So, and that's what.
There isn't a teaching candidate who does this as a free agent. The university they go to provides that support.
I just don't want students in our community to think, oh, if I don't go to Oakland University, there's no way I'm going to student teach or work in Romeo.
I think those are two separate issues. Student teaching is much different than getting an interview to be a hired teacher in Romeo community schools.
And we have quite the vetting process when we hire these teachers.
If you student teach, if you student teach, you kind of get your foot in the door then.
You can, yeah, I'm just, I'm.
It can also work against you.
Right.
Sometimes that's your worst performance, because it's so stressful.
Knowing how. Knowing how small the pool is these days. I'm glad that you're doing this work, this partnership, to assure that we're getting good, good teacher candidates, also that we're giving opportunities to a lot of good kids to have a good experience here in Romeo. And as you say, it might be your foot in the door, but a lot of people get hired in districts that they did not student teach in.
Absolutely.
And it always, I think, will be that way, but I'm just happy that you've got kind of a little bit of a pipeline, so that we're going to get kind of, it sounds like, potentially a steady stream of good candidates.
Correct. And until we truly understand what this partnership agreement, you know, will entail...
Right.
I don't want to shortchange anyone in putting them with a teacher that may not be prepared to be a strong mentor of them as a student teacher in their junior or senior year of college.
Yep. So on another subject. At the workshop, we received information from high school regarding students that, they gave us percentages of students failing math. Can we have information, percentages on like, students are getting As, Bs, Cs, Ds? I mean, I would, I kind of would like to know how everyone's doing, not just who's not doing well in, in all those classes. It would, it'd be kind of nice to know.
I'd have to talk to the high school administration. I don't know if that's data that they've tracked longitudinally over the years.
Well, typically, you track people that are struggling, so that you make sure that they get the support that they need.
But that's it? I mean...
No, well, to make sure they get the support that they need. Your As and Bs don't need extra support, so...
Well, but even Cs and Ds, you know, I mean...
They earn the credit.
So you want to know what grades everyone's getting in...
Just percentages.
Only math or all classes?
Well, I guess you can start with math, but I mean, reading skills and, you know, English language skills would be, science. I mean, it would just be kind of nice to know how well our students are doing, and, you know, what's the percentage? I mean, if every, you know, if there's like 75% above C, I, you know, I guess we're doing pretty well, and if not, then we should know, and, you know, I just, just telling me the percentage of people failing is not real helpful.
That was one of the data points that Mr. Osbold started when he started as the high school principal, tracking. I think he explained in the workshop, you know, what that was. Again, I'm not going to tell him, you know, if he doesn't have that data, we can't go recreate it.
And you think about, like, logistically, when you say the over, A, if we're just talking about high school, then you talk about the overarching math, right? Math can be senior math, math can be geometry, math can be algebra, 1, 2, 3, and 4, math can be personal finance, so like, are you talking break it down? Because not all kids take their math credit.
Well, I don't, I don't know how, how did he do the failing ones? Who, how, what, what math classes did he count in those? He didn't say, he just said failing math.
It's based on grade level, so it's just total, all kids in 11th grade in their math, how many of them are failing?
Right, but he doesn't break it down what kind of math classes.
Well, that's why I was asking you logistic-wise. So you just wanted all, anything that can count for a math credit.
Well, however he came up with the percentage of the failing math students...
I believe I heard that she'd like As, Bs, Cs, and Ds for all subjects. We have over 150 courses at the high school.
Well, just start with math done.
Okay.
I mean, he's, he's got, he's got the failing student percentage, well then, give me...
So you know that the people who weren't failing are As, Bs, and Ds, but you want to know...
Yeah, give me the percentage, like, how much...
So if, if 45% are failing, which they're not...
No.
35% are failing, then you automatically know how many are passing.
Yeah, but I don't know if they're passing with Cs.
She wants to break it down by As.
Yeah, I don't know, like, if, if there's more students getting Cs than Bs and As or Ds, you know, it'd be kind of nice to know.
With a grade point average, maybe do the same thing?
I'm not going to say what we can do within that power school system of pulling information.
Right.
That would have to be something that I would speak to Mr. Osbold about, to see what he could do.
I think it's...
Because I mean, this, I mean, this really didn't tell us a whole lot.
But those are, those are kids, those are at risk. I mean, that's what they're focusing on, are at risk for failure.
Let's pull it back to what the board's role would be. So we have one member of the board asking for a very detailed report. I think what probably needs to happen, Kim, is we need to have a conversation at the board level as to what data we need moving forward for some sort of decision-making. Because I personally, right now, just because this is the first you're bringing it up, can't tell you that knowing As versus Bs is going to make any bit of difference in the role of the board. Now, I can tell you, as an individual teacher, I look at the breakdown, and year after year, gosh, some of my kids are slipping, what parts are they slipping on? I can see why a teacher would want that. But as a board, I'm not sure that putting time and energy into something that in the weeds at this point, because I haven't heard it all the way through, and so far, you're the only one really wanting that, I think we need to take that back and let it go to the curriculum subcommittee, or we'll put it on an agenda here, so we can figure out what we would do with it. Because to just get that data at that level, in that detail, considering all the other things that are probably far more important right now, right now, failing kids are important. All kids are important.
Absolutely.
But putting mechanisms into the failing, I don't know that anything that the board is going to do right now is going to impact a B-level student, you know, like that, oh my gosh, these are some targeted things we would do to make Bs, Ba's, or Cs, BBS. That's, that's really a building level, that's something that departments look at, that's something those individual principals look at. So I would say let's just hold that thought and take it more to here, so we can decide as a board what data we would want moving forward. Because just requesting it, like, right now, you're the only one that seems wanting that level of detail, but maybe we need to hear more from you. And then we could decide as a board how we would use that information.
Right, and that's fine, because I, I mean, as a board member, I like to know that with all these math coaches and such, I mean, is it working? You know, are we, you know, are, are more, like, 90% of our students more successful because of that?
So I think...
So it would be kind of interest, it would be good to know.
So the math coaches, if you remember, were put in to help target it, right?
Right, and I need to know if it's working.
Well, right, you're going to know that, because if, if the percentage of failing steadily goes up, then, then it's working, right? And then comes your next point.
You mean, you want them to go down?
Yeah, sorry. If we, we're suddenly making, raising their scores.
I think we're missing a big point that came out of that workshop, and that was mental health was brought up front face to us. And in regards to that, that gives you a pretty good sign of how a student's doing based off their mental health. So we, we have implemented multiples, multiple different support, we're bringing in more help in regards, math help as well. So for me personally, I do care about the ones that are with the mental health, but mental health also plays a role on the grades. So that's a very good distinction of where students are, not only with their mental health, but with their grades.
But I think the reason I say let's pull it back is, Kim's last statement is a far more aha moment. Okay, we've put in math interventionalists. Really, how we want to ask that question is, hey, Mr. Osbold, now that you have math interventionalists, what are they doing? What data are you using to make sure they're successful? That's a very legitimate, yeah, we put time, energy, and money into something. But to just start the conversation with As, Bs, and Cs, that looks very in the weeds. It doesn't seem like it has a place at the board level, except for, we did make the decision to put those interventionalists in. So I think what Kim is saying is data that is some of the new positions. And I think we give the administration opportunity to say what kind of information they'll be able to collect on that. And let's remember, it hasn't been years and years, and it hasn't even been where we've been fully, you know, face-to-face and doing everything. So, you know, we are, education is an institution, it takes time, we're not going to see an instant. And again, you put that head of social, emotional needs first. I mean, as Dr. Robinson has told us in our, you know, weekly report, I mean, we are seeing some elevated, you know, discipline and things of that nature that is, gets in the way of education, gets in the way of children learning. So, Kim, hold that thought. I'm going to take note of it. I think Ms. McFarland has, and Dr. Robinson has, and we'll further that conversation on data points in relation to, you know, moving the district forward, and it sounds like in relation to positions. Does that seem to meet what you were thinking?
I just would like to know how well our students are doing, and if there's any additional steps we need to take in order to...
Sure.
Improve their learning, because this is the end, you know, this is it for them when they're in high school. They're not at an elementary level where they have years to, you know, catch up or whatever before they're graduating.
Other questions for Mrs. McFarland? Thank you. So I wanted to, we spent good time, thank you again to the board for the workshop. A portion that evening, we, we discussed, you know, our leadership priorities for 2023, and, you know, it's been some time, a couple weeks since then, and we're continuing to, we're, we're beginning to have conversations about staffing for next year, and, and we know we have some teachers that are retiring, and so there's already some turnover in the making. Excuse me, so, you know, in terms of thinking about our priorities, you'll remember that school safety was the highest-rated priority from our leadership team, and student supports was second in terms of categories. So I've been thinking about three specific action steps within those priority categories that I would like to, to move forward, conversation with the board as we look towards our April meeting. So two specific initiatives within school safety. First of all, we talked about the potential of contacting SafeEd services, which is a very reputable company working with a variety of districts in the tri-county area, and that would be, we, you know, we talked about attrition and the inability to staff hall monitors, and really maybe the, the type of people that would be best suited to do this work, to position us to have the safest facilities for, for staff and students. So I'd like to move forward that conversation. I'll be getting the board some more detailed information about what a contract would look like, what type of allocations in there, and of course, this would provide the security services for Romeo High School, 9th Grade Academy, and Romeo Middle School. So we've had some site visits from the president of the company, we've done some reference checking with districts that have worked with them for as many as seven years. We don't have a single negative, you know, reference. So one of the suggestions of the company is that they would potentially get some lead employees on the ground for the last three to four weeks of the school year, so that they would learn our operation, learn our administration, and be able to be the trainers of the staff that they might hire to come on staff. Also want to remind the board that there will be individuals that might work for us within the hall monitor capacity that we would recommend to SafeEd, you know, to be interviewed and transition over. Secondly, in the safety area, we've talked a lot about this, but that is attempting to move forward, to be positioned to approve a school resource officer for Romeo Middle School. Have another meeting tomorrow morning to learn more about this jurisdictional agreement that the Bruce Township Board passed at a recent meeting, and, and how that might interface for us to move forward. You know, our desire is to have a Romeo PD officer serve in that role, but I have the due diligence to make sure that that officer also has the jurisdiction to do the work in that building. So those two initiatives, I feel like we need to have some conversation about and, and work towards action sooner than later, so I'll be getting you more information on those. And then, and then the other one in the area of student supports is, if you remember, we now have four full-time math interventionists at the elementary level, and one of our priorities is to hire that fifth full-time math interventionist. This would come from our SIR funding, and so we want to, we're going to be putting out an internal posting after spring break, because we just simply want to see if any of our current teachers are interested in this, because that then could make a grade level classroom, or we hired a middle school teacher in the, the four we hired last year, or three we hired last year, so that if we're going out to hire for grade level vacancies, that we know and we can include that vacancy in the process. So nothing formal in regard to any of these, but more information and hopefully the intent at our April meeting, that we can take some action on these, so we can continue to move forward in both of these, these areas. And that's all that I have tonight in my report.
Okay, Rachel, yours isn't on an action item, so you'll be at the end, we just have a few action items. All right. There wasn't anybody else who turned one in, right? Wants to speak on an action item tonight? Nope. All right. Can I have a motion for the Employee Services Resolution 23, which was updated and is at our table?
So moved.
Moved by Young, supported by Connor. After we approve, we do have an introduction to make, but is there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, and I believe we have Kristen Stewart here.
So Kristen is here. This came together quickly due to the due diligence of Mrs. Lasky oversees the food service department. So I had the opportunity to spend probably an hour and a half with Kristen last Thursday afternoon, and it was probably, I, I won't take credit for this decision, but we actually met at the high school, because I was finishing up another meeting there. But that was a good opportunity for her to, for me to show her the best kitchen in the district, so I'm sure that was, that was, that was part. So that wasn't, that wasn't any ploy, that was just convenience that we were there. But we're excited to have Kristen on board, extensive background, most recently in the Ann Arbor Public Schools through Chartwell's Dining Services, fully-degreed dietitian, and most school districts don't have that type of person in charge of their food service department. So we're looking forward to her starting on April 14th, having some crossover time with Nicole Haw before she heads off to Seattle, Washington. And so welcome, Kristen, we're excited to have you here.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome. [applause] It probably, you are a graduate of Romeo as well, so welcome back. Did you go to Powell or Romeo Middle?
I'm in Romeo High, but it's now...
Okay, so you went to our grass plot that we had lots of discussion on.
Yes.
All right, well, welcome, welcome back, we're glad to have you. All right, can I have a motion for Employee Services Resolution Number 24, which is our second reading of the board policy, which is the learning and achievement.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Demus, support by Mr. Connor. Questions on this one? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. The next one is a motion for Academic Services Resolution Number 25, which is a professional development advisory committee. You'll read in the, the board packet that this is something, it's new, the law states that we have to put this advisory committee together for certain, I think it's eight hours of our professional development, not all of our professional development, but some very specific. So can I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Riley, supported by Mr. Connor. Any questions, concerns? The list is on there, so we're happy with those people that have agreed to serve in this capacity. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The last one is Technology Services Resolution 26, which was discussed tonight by our technology director. This is for the transportation building technology contract approval.
So moved.
Support.
Okay. Who, who do we have? Okay, Mr. Connor, okay. All right. Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Any discussion for the full board? Start at the end of the table down there, Mr. Young.
I just wanted to say I really enjoyed practically two years for us as a board to be able to get together with all the principals and the district administration, and really collab, and understand the inside of the buildings, and understand some of the climate survey. And I know Dr. Robinson mentioned some of the staff potentially would even like to see two of those meetings happen in a year, and I would personally feel I, I would be in favor of that, so that's all I have tonight.
Especially if we get fed by K-Blacks again, no?
Phenomenal.
Yeah, I want to...
Yeah, I want to congratulate a former student of Romeo, Nick Blandenberg.
Blenkenberg.
Did I mispronounce that?
Yes.
Sorry. I was watching the game last night, the captain of University of Michigan Hockey, and he was a member of the 2016 championship team, so congratulations to a former student.
Mm-hmm.
They're going on to Boston for the final four.
My son is going to watch.
No, I'm not, thank you.
I just wanted to say, big congrats to the theater and music and choral programs, the show was outstanding, and I texted the board on Saturday, didn't, or Sunday, didn't give you much notice, but said, go if you can, because it was just outstanding, Mr. Henkel and Mr. Phillips and Ms. Canoblock, is that correct? I know it's K-Block, but I don't know how to pronounce it. It was just really an outstanding show, gave a lot of opportunities, a lot of kids to, to participate in something really, really cool. They gave a shout-out to Mr. Nelson, too, for technology help, because technology's really important, and it was great in that, in that new theater. I also, just something specific that happened at the end of the show, when they introduced the musicians, there was a man sitting behind me, and he said, I thought that was all recorded music. Like, he didn't know that that was our kids playing, so I thought that was really, really cool.
Mr. Connor?
I think we're good.
Mr. Antoine?
I'm just echoing what Chris had said, I appreciated the, the work session that we had, and the collaboration that we had with the district administrators, it was awesome, I liked it.
Ditto. All right, we have one public comment, Rachel Ikorst.
Good evening, this is pretty quick. I, first, just, I want to say thank you for the climate survey that was sent out, I think in February now, that seems such a long time ago. I just appreciate any time, all stakeholders are included, because I know not every district does that, and I have always felt that Romeo's done a good job at, at including all of us. So I don't know if teachers got the same exact questions that parents did, but if, if they did, I agree with Dr. Demus that, that there probably should be another survey, just, and I'm saying that with a teacher hat on, you know, that would specifically be through that lens, and, and not the parent lens. But the other question I just wanted to ask, that I know won't be answered tonight, but throw it out there, as far as security, and when you're meeting in your subcommittees and meeting with administrators about that, I know there's a lot of discussion about, you know, what we're going to do to improve, you know, how we, what we, how we react to it, but I'm just hoping that there is a lot of discussion and protocol about what we do to identify and prevent the Oxfords, to begin with. So I, I'm sure it is, but I, I didn't see it up there, and I've looked through, you know, the, a lot of stuff that's coming out of Oxford after their, you know, their November, and things that are coming out of that, and even in their stuff, I don't see a lot of it listed, but maybe it's, you know, it's, it's there, but I know that's, can be a little bit more of a sensitive topic, and it's not always put out, and maybe in this format, but I just want to keep that on the radar, hopefully. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak this evening? Seeing none, can I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Moved by Mr. Young, supported by Mr. Connor, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.